... of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call?
Trustee Bellauer?
Yes.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am.
Procedural actions, move for the adoption of motion number twenty-five dash zero zero one to nominate and appoint David M. Young to the position of President of the Board of Trustees for twenty twenty-five. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bellauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am.
President Young assumes the duties of the President. Next we have motion number twenty-five dash zero 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 two to nominate and appoint Keith Bellauer to the position of Vice President of the Board of Trustees for twenty twenty-five.
I need a motion?
That's you. So moved.
You made the motion.
You would just say so moved.
Okay, I'll make that motion, okay. Discussion then, okay. No, I need a roll call?
Second. Discussion?
Okay, you're right.
Trustee McGur- I'm sorry, um, trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bellauer?
Upstate.
And trustee Young?
Yes ma'am.
Next is motion number twenty-five dash zero zero three to dispense with reading of the minutes from the December fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four work session.
Need a discussion? I need a motion?
That would be you. You would just make the motion.
Right.
Call for the second.
I need a second then.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bellauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am.
Motion number twenty-five dash zero zero four to approve the minutes of the December fifth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting.
Need a motion? I need a second on that.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bellauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Next is motion number twenty-five dash zero zero five to approve the minutes of the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four work session.
Need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bellauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am.
Next, Police Chief Rob Gerhardt presents new part-time Police Officer Max Vonderhar.
Uh, thank you, Vonderhar family. I know you're out there in the audience. Believe it or not, even though I've hired a lot of police officers, young superstar Max here is my first police officer I've ever appointed as a police chief, so.
Uh, President Young's gonna read your oath of office and then, uh, when we're done with this, we'll take pictures and you can all come up and get a whole bunch of pictures.
You ready, handsome? Aye, Max Vonderhar, you solemnly swear.
Aye, Max Vonderhar, you solemnly swear.
To uphold, uphold the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
To uphold the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The laws and Constitution of the state of Ohio.
To laws and Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of Ross Township.
And the laws and ordinances of Ross Township, Ohio.
And I will discharge duties of the office, police officer.
And I will discharge duties of a police officer.
To which I have been appointed to, to the best of my ability.
To which I've been appointed to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, young man.
Do they have any ideas for pictures?
Yeah.
Let's do trustees and-
Family wanna come up and get pictures with Max?
Yep. Let's do all of ours first and then we'll go to-
Bring them all.
Oh, oh, uh, what, who's pinning on?
Mom, mom.
Let's do the staff first, then we'll do family. Oh, it has a pin. Alright, thank you.
First things first.
What are you doing first?
Pin his badge.
Let's pin his badge.
Yes, okay. Who do you want to do that?
Dad, mom.
Mom and dad, come on up. You can stab him, it's okay, we won't take the report.
EMS is here.
Hang on, let's move that chair so it's a prettier picture. Second.
Let's stab him.
That's fine.
Don't flex your pecs.
Alright. Good job, everybody. Thank you.
Stand up there, man, you got more pictures to take.
Yeah, I mean, be correct.
Alright, we'll have you guys move off real quick, we'll do our pictures and then all the other family can come on up and we'll take pictures for you. They went where you are.
If you give the call between the flags-
Call both, we're on the right side, bud.
Between the flags. Thank you.
Family, come on up.
I'll gather away for all the family.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we're all gonna have to squeeze in somehow.
Hey, you don't have-
Go on, go on. Just one more with you guys, absolutely.
And I'll get one. Hang on, smile real quick. Alright, now, come on up.
Watch your step.
You need to do, you got a good handle.
I gotta move chairs, I'm moving chairs.
You're fine. Yeah, go on up there.
You guys out? They're in.
I'm looking through, isn't it? Not if she can all, uh, with the, all the ways.
Who else?
Jay, wanna take some pictures? All you gotta do is see.
I didn't know you were this popular, Max.
I'm trying not to be.
I'm from Cleveland.
I tried not to be.
Is today inappropriate right now?
No, I'm, I'm still bangle. Wanna get in here?
I don't matter.
Yeah, you guys can get in.
You wanna hear, you wanna stand?
Yeah, let me.
My kids.
Questions?
Alex, let me come on your end.
There we go, she's a, she's a problem solver. Come wait till your fingers are out of the way too.
Sorry about that.
I'm sending those to Kayla.
One more, one more, just in case.
Does your face hurt? Right?
And then I'll just send her for fun.
Good job. Take him out, go in. You won't see me in the morning, but yes.
I might as well just jump your cares back.
Get one more, come over. Are you excited over there yet? We're just gonna stand up and fit.
I mean, we did see the stalls.
I know it's a good night where you don't get to sit down.
Okay, Glory's going with the rest.
Next we have motion number twenty-five dash zero zero six to approve the promotion of Steve Meyer to the position of Fire Lieutenant at the rate of twenty-seven dollars and three cents per hour and provide all health, vision, dental, and life insurance premiums effective the first full pay period in twenty twenty-five with a fifty cent increase in the hourly rate of pay at the successful completion of the six-month probationary period and at least a fifty cent increase in the hourly rate of pay at the successful completion of one year.
I need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bellauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am.
President Young will swear on Fire Lieutenant Steve Meyer.
Ready, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, aye, Steve Meyer?
Aye, Steve Meyer.
You solemnly swear to the, and we'll support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
You solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The laws and resolutions of Ross Township Butler County, Ohio.
Laws and resolutions of Ross Township Butler County, Ohio.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Will discharge duties of office, Fire Lieutenant Ross Township.
Discharge the duties of the Office of Fire Lieutenant Ross Township.
Very good, young man, very good. Wait, anybody up?
Steve.
Everybody come on up, take care of the pictures.
Let's get them pinned first.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Keith?
You guys taking pictures?
Sure.
Family or trustee first, where you want?
Let's do family.
All the families.
And, and-
I don't know if there's enough room up here for a whole of them.
You two get middle. I know, just get everybody in, if I have to stand behind and feel wide. I think I'm gonna go wide.
Everybody kinda like lean in?
That's awesome, not the unders. I settle. Two, three, here we go. Good job, everybody.
I have a camera picture.
Come on down.
Oh, babe, babe, sorry. You take pictures of two of us and then-
Just us, ourselves.
Do you want me to do a thing? And then you can tell we do it.
You're the side of the table, bud. Otherwise you just gotta face your depression.
You got it? Hang on, I'm zoomed out. I was zoomed out for the larger, oh. Okay.
Alright.
Come on in.
Come on.
Here we go.
Oh, don't worry. Other people. Yeah.
Hang on for a second, Keith. Oh wait, go, do that again.
Do that again.
Oh, very nice indeed, thank you. Alright, trustees, come on in and then if there's any other personnel who would like opportunity. Get them in between the flag, flags, they know what they're doing. Not their first rodeo, alright? Anybody else?
Thank you. Chief? You want one, Scott? Thank you, sir. You guys want one? Do you wanna come up here? Hold that for me.
I know, it's like a-
Up top.
Awesome.
Hold on, Steve. Get one with us. Lot more, okay.
I know, isn't it terrible?
Awesome. And then, um, would you, and with McCann's absence, you want this email?
Yeah, that's fine, yep. When she come back?
She'll be back next week. I know, it's unacceptable. We're feeling the same.
Yeah, we got one.
No, we got one more, but.
Next, on the agenda is the recognition of Assistant Fire Chief Jared Morris's twenty years of exemplary service to Ross Township.
Before we get into Chief Morris's, I just wanna congratulate Steve again. You've done a great job last year with the inspections. For those who don't know, which, just a handful, 'cause half the room is Steve's family, uh, Steve came to us a couple of years ago from the city of Cincinnati. He spent nineteen years for the city and came to us, uh, went for a little change of pace and he's taken over the inspection program and investigations this year and he's done a tremendous job with that. I appreciate him. Thanks, Steve. Morris? Chief Morris has been with us for twenty years, uh, back in October was his twentieth anniversary, but I just, just got his, his class ring, your twenty-year ring.
Thanks.
Appreciate you and everything you do, do for me in the Department of Texas.
Sure, sure.
Congratulations.
Pretty cool.
Want pictures?
Yeah, yes.
I think he needs to give a speech or something.
We wanna, come on up and-
Move everybody.
Yeah, just move the chairs out again.
You wanna see it?
They're fairly small. Watch my cup there. Go, go, this way, I'm trying to avoid those, that chair. There we go, we'll prop that out. Awesome.
Come on, kids. Where you gonna stand? Right here? But you gotta-
Yup, I gotta see your pretty faces. There we go, oh, that's awesome. Alright, I'll be sorting the knees off. Thank you all. I'm gonna have the chairs up and down. That's the only thing that'd have to bless the neck. Raise them.
Today, dismiss, say they don't wanna stay for the meeting. Yeah, if you guys don't wanna stay for the rest of the meeting, you guys are welcome to-
Feel free to go, we're not gonna be offended.
You guys gonna go eat? It's all on him, paying for it. Young man, you gonna be a farmer like your dad?
Gonna be policeman, I got you.
So that cleared a room.
What?
So that cleared a room.
That's why I said I'm not doing a headcount tour.
Right?
Seven hundred people here and they're awesome.
It's great to get turnout like that. Hey, guys, what's that?
There were three. And there were-
You guys have a good night. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So come, Brian Rogers.
I hope you feel better. Just wanted to watch that foot out there. Georgia, no, they're not.
We didn't get any, but we can ask everybody to like.
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is public participation. Individuals who wish to address the board must be from the podium and state their name and address for the record. Point should be made clearly and concisely within the five-minute time limit. One person's time may not be yielded to another. Comments should be directed to the board with courtesy and respect. Any responses from the board will be delivered in like-kind. Do we have anyone interested in addressing the board this evening?
Come on, somebody.
You don't have to, we, we- Making allowance. You had a free pass.
Well, we did something right for a couple of weeks then.
Next, under reports, we have the fiscal officer.
Alright, hello everyone, it's a much smaller room, but you know, we'll take it. Um, I have for your review and consideration, these are the certifications of purchase orders written since the last re, since the last meeting and the certification of checks written since the last meeting, because mine, these are all for the month of December. As part of your, um, the purchase orders, there is a then and now that exceeds three thousand dollars. This was something I mentioned last month, it's the sinary. It was for the, uh, striping and the lettering of the medic. Then it, it wasn't really a problem, it's just that it came in much higher than we anticipated. So, there is a copy of the purchase order attached to that if you'd like to look at it. Then we have in front of you, um, as always, the one with the blue banner at the top is the list of receipts for the month of December, nothing too terribly exciting. You will see a lot of CD interest, which is something I also mentioned at the last meeting, uh, I believe it totals a hundred and twelve thousand and some change, uh, for the, and that was the February, May, August, and November quarterly interest installments. Now that I have that resolved with First Financial, uh, you'll see it on a more timely basis on the, on the appropriate receipt reports. Also have in front of you to review are the, uh, year-end, December, management reports, which includes a revenue summary and a fund summary. If you'll grab the fund summary, it's a single page, it says fund summary at the top. I bolded some numbers for you to look at. Now, we will still have some bills that are gonna trickle in, that are gonna get paid against purchase orders and things, but this is a pretty good idea of how we're gonna end the year and I want to point out the third or the fourth column from the left or maybe it's the sixth account, the fund summary and all that. It's the year-to-date revenue. Uh, year-to-date revenue for all the departments was five million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand. The, if you skip over two more, the year-to-date expenditures, five million, one hundred and eleven thousand. This does not include carryover totals, so this just shows you what our incoming revenue was, what our expenditures were. I'm happy to say that our expenditures were less than our year-to-date revenue, which is also fantastic. Then, um, it tells you what the ending fund balance will be, what's being reserved, uh, that, that column is going to change drastically as I close out POs, um, paying bills in the month of January, um, using twenty-four POs and in some cases, something might even carry over a little bit longer. And then this is the loosely, loosely estimated unencumbered fund balance to start the year. Won't know what that final number is until I close the year, which is around mid-Febuary when that actually happens. So, just wanted to point those, those numbers out, um, as points of interest to you and you all do. Then, um, there's an appropriation summary report, that's on December thirty-first and then ultimately the appropriation supplemental report. This is again, me moving monies, uh, within the same fund, but moving things around, um, just year-end gets a little bit flaky. I forgot to sign it, so I'm gonna do that now. And, date it, and then I will need your signatures on this one as well. There is not going to be a December bank reconciliation, I'm holding off just to see if anything trickles in that I need to add to December as far as receipts, 'cause I can go in and, and basically backdate it and show the actual post date being January, but it hitting in December. There have been times in the past couple of years where I've just closed December, just a hair too, too soon and then something had to be carried over into January and it's just easier, we don't have to do that. So, um, and then there is a November bank attestation, uh, the credit card attestation. The last meeting I pointed out that there was, after meeting with First Financial, they flagged, uh, one of the credit cards, um, and, uh, trustee Bellauer has closed that card, so I've made a notation on this November attestation that the, the card was canceled by the cardholder. And, um, this is, um, a report that you can all review and I encourage you to do, but I do need President Young to sign it. And that's all I have for you by way of reports, um, anticipating what's coming up in legislation. Under the fiscal officer's report, um, we're going to have just the fiscal policies and, um, and for the, uh, year-end and the beginning of January of twenty-five, how we're gonna operate, that's gonna be the first leg, piece of legislation. There's gonna be some, a resolution to approve staffing levels based on the budget hearings that we held in November. I also have coming up, um, I would like to continue with my contract with the Auditor of State's LGS or Local Government Services Division, um, and the terms of the contract have not changed, I'm contracting with them for up to eight hours at fifty dollars an hour, uh, for a total of four hundred. I believe I spent three hundred of that last year, um, if you need a firm number on that, but I believe I did not spend it all, um, but I would like to continue with that. Then, um, the then and now purchase order, uh, will be a resolution coming up for you to sign and that is for the sinary, which I just discussed. And then, back in June and July, we did temporary, uh, temporary budget and temporary appropriations. Now that we have healthcare costs, we have staffing levels, I'm able to kinda go in and I would like to amend the temporary appropriations just so they align a little bit better with the actual budgets that we're adopting. And then, um, when we go to adopt a permanent appropriations in February, March, after I close the year, uh, the twenty-four year and we're ready to do that, it will be a lot closer to the actual. So, that will be a resolution coming up. And then, I, at the last meeting, I talked about moving forward with taking our current money market and checking and moving it to a hybrid account that would be a larger interest-bearing account, which gives us the opportunity to potential double the amount of interest that we earn on the money market, which is, right now, it's about eleven hundred dollars a month. That has the potential to increase drastically by doing a hybrid account, plus it, it just keeps it cleaner on our, on our reporting. And also to enter into an agreement with them to allow me to do a positive pay for, um, our electronic payments so that, because we do make quite a few payments electronically and those are usually large dollar amounts, and I would like to increase our protections with that and I believe that this is something that the Auditor of State would say would be a best practice. So, that's the motion coming up and then finally the motion to approve the bill. Unless you have questions about any of those items, you can go back to the rest of the agenda. Are there any questions for me? I know I rattled all that off rather quickly.
We don't understand that not only is our budget balanced, but in somewhat excess?
Yes, we do tend to operate, uh, where we do not spend as much as we budget, we tend to come in lower. Um, I'm happy to report that that is gonna continue.
Good thing. Thank you for your hard work making that-
No, no, I would, uh, I would thank the department heads and the staff who are involved with all the purchasing, they are very conscientious. When we, when we get to it a little later, uh, for work sessions, there's, there's a topic I would like to introduce, um, for that, but we will, I'll just let it go until we get to there. But yeah, they do a great job and, um-
They do.
They, they make it, um, easier on me to keep us holding the line. I very rarely have to say no, we can't afford that. No, and I'm looking at you, but it's not, it's Julie and Lori. It's not me, it's Julie and Lori, I'm not gonna, just be honest.
Tell my son, the only difference is the amount of zeros on the end, but nonetheless, we're a government agency and-
I know when I hear- Hear me out, hear me out. When I hear that, I usually get ready to- Hear me out. Hear me out. You know, when I hear that, I usually get ready to go, no, but no.
That's nothing else.
Thanks. Thank you.
Consideration for legislation. Purpose: The Auditor of the State of Ohio requires certain policies be established to allow for strict internal controls on the public's money. This resolution sets that policy. Resolution number 2025-001, adopting the Ross Township Fiscal Policies for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, authorizing transfer from the General Fund of Ross Township to various other funds pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.40E, and requesting the county auditor to make advance payments of taxes throughout fiscal year 2025 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34.
I need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Purpose: The 2025 Appropriations Budget was the sole topic of conversation at a special meeting of the board on November 19th, 2024, and as part of the work session on November 20th, 2024. The following resolution approves pay increases under the 2025 Appropriations Budget. Resolution number 2025-002, approving the staffing level and pay summary rates for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Purpose: The fiscal officer has requested permission to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's Local Government Services Division to provide training and consultation services for 2025. The following resolution approves that agreement. Resolution number 2025-003, authorizing an agreement with the Ohio Auditor of State's Local Government Services Division to provide consulting services to the fiscal officer as it may relate to their job duties, Ohio budgetary law, and other statutory requirements relating to the accounting and reporting function of the township.
Need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Purpose: The fiscal officer discussed the need to adopt a resolution approving a then-and-now purchase order that exceeds $3,000 for the payment to the sinary, too, for lettering and striping for medic 103 in the fire department. This resolution approves that purchase order. Resolution number 2025-004, authorizing payment of certain then-and-now purchase order obligations.
Need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Purpose: The fiscal officer discussed the need to amend the 2025 Temporary Appropriations to better reflect the anticipated 2025 expenditures as reviewed during the 2025 budget hearings, including healthcare premiums. This resolution approves those amendments. Resolution number 2025-005, authorizing amendments to the 2025 Temporary Appropriations Budget.
Need a mo- motion for the, I need a second for the motion, I'm sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Purpose: Approve banking processes with First Financial Bank. Motion number 25-007, authorizing the combining of the First Financial Bank primary checking and money market accounts into a single hybrid interest-bearing account, and the use of positive pay for all electronic payments.
Need a motion to the se- I need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Purpose: Approval to pay the bills. Motion number 25-008, to pay the bills as presented through the fiscal officer's certification of purchase orders.
Need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Department reports. First on the list is administration. The only thing that administration has this evening is a nuisances update. And just a reminder, there is a case management meeting, I believe is the terminology, Case Management Conference in regards to the burn structure on, uh. Robin? Yes, on Robin. It's scheduled for January 9th at 8:30 in the morning. Required to be there, so hopefully we'll be moving forward with that. And the legislation for consideration this evening is the annual housekeeping resolution. So the purpose of that resolution is the Board of Trustees must establish policy annually to allow for travel expense reimbursement, establish the meeting schedule, appoint its members to various boards and committees, and declare intent to conduct an internet auction for the sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit township personnel, personal property for the current year. This resolution adopts those housekeeping measures.
Need a second to the motion?
Resolution number 2025-006, establishing the schedule for meetings for the Board of Trustees, confirming appointments to various boards or committees, adopting an elected official's travel expense policy, and declaring intent to conduct an internet auction for the sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit township personal property for fiscal year 2025.
Okay, now I need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blauer?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, next is the fire department report.
Good evening. Let's have a couple items on the agenda tonight. The first is the monthly incident reports. In December, we did 141 total calls, 82 EMS calls and 59 fire calls. For the whole year, we did 1,504 calls last year. Fire, monthly fire inspection port for December. Lieutenant Meyer actually provided a very comprehensive report of all the inspections and the base investigations he did throughout the year. In two, in 2023, we only had six recorded fire inspections completed. Last year, in '24, we had 135 completed. 60 of those were in violation, and there's nine of those that are still in violation. So Steve's made great strides on the inspection program for the township. He's been doing a heck of a job.
With that increase of inspections, is that cost to that, or is that?
No, no, we don't charge for, to do fire inspection.
It doesn't cost the department any more?
No, they're on duty when they're doing it.
Hopefully prevents, prevents fire.
Right, it's, then, then 10 is to prevent any, any fire runs. A couple of community engagement updates. With the fire inspections, Steve has also taken on the smoke alarm program. He's partnered with the Red Cross, who is providing us with, so far, they've provided 24 smoke and carbon monoxide alarms to the department at no charge. He's installed eight of those already in December at four different residences. And we have installed five Knox boxes in December, and there's three more scheduled to be installed this month. So that's, that's kind of taken off. Uh, we also, the department also adopted two needy families this year from Elda. It's the first time we've done it. We did a giving tree. And they had a great, great response from the department and the members. And I think each family, we provided them about 35 gifts at each for their kids and, and families for Christmas. So that was, that was a good turnout, and we'll probably do that again this year. Uh, the last thing I have for you, I provided a copy of the resolution from the Butler County Commissioners from their meeting last month, where they declared intent to withdraw from the current countywide EMA operation and pursue the possibility of starting their own. I'm sure you guys have probably heard some about this in the news, but I just want to bring that to the forefront. Something probably going to be talking about this year. They've been a big asset to us, and I think, I think they're trying to fix something that's not broken. And I, I think it would do a disservice to us and all the other jurisdictions in the county if the Commissioners took this service over. Director Bowlin, I believe, is going to be at the township meeting next Thursday to present some more information on this. But that's the resolution. If you guys want to read over it, that was from their, the Commissioner's website today. And that's all I have to present.
To speak on that, in 2019, when there was an attempt to do the same thing, the Township Association as a whole voted to support the current structure. And I'm guessing there'll be discussion about that next Thursday at the next Township Association meeting. So if any of you are interested in attending that, or, or making your thoughts known, it's a good opportunity to talk to the other townships. I, I don't believe it's not, it's not been on my radar that the thought process has changed collectively.
The, the current makeup of the EMA and the, the teams associated with it are very well experienced and dedicated personnel from the departments throughout the county. And if, if they decide to take over and start a new EMA, all that's going to go away. And that's, that's something we don't, don't want to lose that.
And we've contributed towards some of that equipment. I mean, with our, our annual fee, that's what a portion of it goes to. So how are they going to divvy up the equipment that's purchased amongst the participating townships? It, it would create a, an interesting dilemma.
Did they cite a reason why they want to do this?
The per capita costs are increasing, and that's.
They complained about the per capita cost increase, which was minimal. I believe, in my opinion, it was minimal.
It's like $1,000 for us. It's not.
Yeah, it's nothing that's going to break.
You know, what we have access to and all that, I don't think. I, I had an opportunity, just ironically, to speak to the head of Warren County's EMA, and he commented on what's going on here, the takeover attempt again. And he said, wow, if your Commissioners are really that concerned about it, they could have just did what Warren County did. And with the per capita cost increase, the Commissioners chose to cover the cost increase so that the townships wouldn't have to. So that is an option. You know, they said, oh, well, we'll take on, we'll contribute more, and that way the townships can just stay where they current, their current levels are. So there are other options available.
The Commissioners also stated that they are not aware when their equipment is leaving the area. First of all, not the Commissioners' equipment, it's the EMA's equipment and the money that they get from each resident.
And federal funding.
But also on the EMA Executive Board, one of Commissioners is on, and he attends those meetings. So they know when.
They know, they should know when their equipment, when the equipment is leaving the county, as they have a representative on the board. So not sure where the disconnect is falling.
What, what, what if anybody came in minus?
I think we'd be, we'd be losing something by this. I don't, I don't know what their reasoning is. I don't know if it's a political reasoning or if it has anything to do with the Sheriff's Department. I don't know.
April Power, is it too much of a ask for you to write up an opinion or a narrative on it on what your opinion is?
Well, we, I attended the Commissioners' meeting last month with about 40 other chiefs and officers from the county. And several, several of them spoke, and we all have the same mindset. But we let our, our opinions known to the Commissioners and the, and their board, so.
So did they listen?
Not yet.
This is going to be an ongoing discussion.
This is going to be an ongoing thing. They can't do anything until September. They have to have 90 days before the end of the year to do this. So that's why they couldn't do it this year. It'll, it'll be in '26 when it would take effect.
And they're, they're saying they're just using this as a, a opportunity to explore the possibility, but they've basically given the warning shot over the bow that they're looking at it. And isn't it the intent of the chiefs to continue to be a presence at the Commissioners' meetings?
And under the EMA falls the, the Butler County Tech Rescue Team and the Hazmat Team, which, we had the tech rescue team out last month when the car went through the house on Sisay Brookville. Thirteen guys from various departments across Butler County, they're to shore that house up to make it safe. If, if that EMA goes away, that technical rescue team goes away.
Well, and aren't, isn't the Hazmat Team, they're dispatched quite a bit with spills and.
Right.
Container spills and truck crashes where there's hazardous materials. I mean, I think there's far more to what that small group of EMA is doing. They operate pretty efficiently.
Right.
So I did bring, in case anyone was interested, the current, the costs over the years of what our participation is. I have to, because I thought it.
It may have been several years since that per capita gone on.
The per capita, the amount has fluctuated from year to year, but it's the per capita cost. I went back to 2017 because that's what I had available. Back in 2017, our, our, what we were being asked to pay is $3,100. It has fluctuated up as high as $3,400. We were back down to $3,224, and it is going up to $4,600 in '25. And then there's another cost in, there's a small bump. But honestly, just what we, we get from them, it's really not that big of a.
So the sheriff still houses all the equipment, basically. At one time, he used to have this semi. No, the sheriff has his own, own stuff. The EMA, we, the EMA has a, a barn at the Fairgrounds, big warehouse that keep all their, their equipment in there.
Just another layer of bureaucracy to.
Yes.
The whole thing.
I, I believe that probably all the county chiefs will be writing a letter of support for Director Bowlin and his team.
Somebody.
EMA, is that environment we're talking, or you're talking?
Emergency Management Agency.
Okay, if, if you're unable to attend the meeting, the Township Association meeting next week, because I'm secretary, I have to report on it anyway. I can report on it at the work session as to what the vibe of the entire association is. My guess would be that it's going to be, maintain the current structure as it's. The last time there was a letter of support sent to the Commissioners from the Township Association.
And, and would it help if each individual township had their own?
A letter of.
Yes.
I think it would, definitely.
Something we should draft up and maybe.
Something we, we should.
Fairfield Township.
Yes.
We can certainly do that and say that we're prepared to offer a letter of support in addition to.
Yeah.
Let me, if that's the.
Yeah, I go once every.
Feeling of.
Your opinion should fade away.
Absolutely.
I think we.
Something like that.
We'll have to say so.
For what it's worth, Senator.
Thank you.
Your chief.
Next would be reporting from the Road Department. Unfortunately, the Road Superintendent is ill this morning. He only has one item, and it is. is ill this morning. He only has one item, and it is legislation for consideration of which he is in favor of. And the purpose is the Butler County Engineers' Office Traffic Engineer is recommending Black Road be converted to all double yellow center line once it is paved in 2025. So in other words, there would be no passing zones on Black Road. There currently are two passing zones on Black Road. So-
What's the speed limit through there? Thirty-five from New London?
Five or four, yeah, I can't remember. Was it forty-five?
So Resolution Number 2025 dash zero zero seven, approving modifications to the passing zones on Black Road and Ross Township.
I need a second to that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Gunn?
Yes, ma'am.
The next report will be from the Police Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Calls to service for December twenty-four. Under ninety-three total of self-initiated calls, that brought the total up to four thirty-six. So thirteen auto accidents, five domestics, one drug arrest or activity, one shots fired call, one suicide call, one sex offense, thirteen suspicious vehicle person runs, a TPO violation, and a hundred and fifty-seven other various related calls. I, I am going, I do get on a daily basis the officer's daily activity reports. And I'm, I am, even though they're very busy, they do a lot of self-initiated business checks. If we put something out because someone says, they're speeding on my road, they're logging times in there, they check vacation houses on, on every single shift with every officer. So I'm, I'm very pleased by the self-initiated proactivity that the officers are doing out there. And I do read those every day, which takes quite a bit of time. But from a community outreach standpoint, I don't know if you saw or not, most of you may, the videos are still out there. We participated in Operation Santa Slay down in Cincinnati, which it was just for the Cincinnati region. So it was police departments all from all over southwest Ohio. I think we had it in Columbus, Cleveland, maybe Akron also. So we would go down with the police cruisers, turn the lights on, and we drove to Children's Hospital. They would have all the kids lined up in the windows to watch us, because obviously they can't come out and with certain illnesses be around the public. Then we went over to University Hospital Medical Center. We went through the Ronald McDonald House, and we went through the VA Hospital for all the veterans out there. So those videos on Facebook, just the two that I put out, which is too much according to my wife obscuring me, generated about seventeen thousand views on social media. So that was really good for us. I reached out to Dr. Rice with the schools. I had a teacher from Elda that put me in touch with a, a very unique program called Books in Badges, which is a Starfish Assignment. So it's a grant that allows police departments to go into the elementary school and read and provide books at no cost to kids. Only sworn law enforcement personnel can do it. And I applied for this grant, spoke with the CEO that's there. We are now a, we are now approved. We're a part of this. There'll be a social media post coming out. We're waiting for Scholastic to approve the books that we will read to the kids, depending on the different age groups. And then they get a sticker that has Ross Township PD, it has the Starfish Assignment. They get to, they get issued all the books in the classroom. We go in and read the book, and then they get to keep the books afterwards. So I am, I actually sent, I copied the principals and Dr. Rice saying, what a great job that teacher did reaching out for me to do it. It just took a little bit of time with the holidays, obviously, but we will be starting that after the first of the year. So, so that, that's going to be a great community outreach for us in the schools there.
The more we're in front of the kids, the better we are.
That's right. That's right. Absolutely. Our new, our new SRO, Madison is doing a great job in there. They're starting to, I mean, Dave did a great, great job. I couldn't even do the job that Dave did over the years, but Madison is doing an outstanding job. She's making it her own. We're starting to transition Dave now out to the road to do his supervisory duties. And Madison is going to take over the reins and just call when she, she needs help on something. But I've got nothing but good reports from everybody involved with her going in there. And we knew she was going to do a good job anyway. But kudos to her so. And that's, that's all I have.
Township Business, Old Business, None From Administration, any from the board?
I have a question. Last time we, or last meeting, we were talking about a bill that we received from Butler County. Have we gotten any more feedback from them about paving?
No, I'm still holding it. I'm waiting. I'm in a holding pattern, waiting.
Have, have they been made aware of, or disclosure of it?
I did not reach back out other than asking the initial questions about it.
Okay.
So I didn't know. I was uncertain as to who was going to do what.
And then this came up tonight. Chief Johns, you were talking about Knox box, Knox boxes. Were we going to put something in a township newsletter about the availability or, or the importance of those? Maybe not the availability.
We talked about it.
When you re-bonused the program and filled it out again, wasn't it in the newsletter?
I believe it was.
Is, is that something that Lieutenant Meyer, when he's doing his inspections and things, would maybe?
Would the, the Knox boxes, whatever, for residential, he's doing commercial inspections.
Right.
But he does check the Knox boxes on the commercial buildings.
Okay.
Make sure the keys are the correct keys that are in the box. It, make sure they don't need updated.
Does every business here have one? I mean, I see them around, but I don't-
A, a lot of them, but not everyone. I know the schools do. It seems like all the new ones going in have, have been getting them.
Okay. Save somebody a-
Save somebody a lot of money on the door.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
New Business, consideration for legislation, purpose, approve an additional forty hours of vacation per year for Police Chief Robert Gerhart and Road Superintendent Paul Bullock. Motion Number 25 dash zero zero nine, to approve an additional forty hours of vacation per year for a total of three weeks per year for Police Chief Robert Gerhart, and an additional forty hours of vacation per year, the fifth and final week of vacation accrual, for Road Superintendent Paul Bullock. Vote effective January first, 2025.
Need a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I don't know.
Did you get the check? I sent the check in the mail. My wife thanked you.
The Road Superintendent was not able to be here this evening. President Young, would, would you like to call and tell him of this nice deed?
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't know you were talking to me. What was the question?
Would you like to call the Road Superintendent and-
Let him know?
-tell him of this, since he's not present this evening?
Do that.
Because I don't know that he is aware.
I'll call him, tell him that it's mine, not his.
We'll put concessions on it.
And make waves.
A roll call vote.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Bulat-, or Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry about that.
Any new business from the board?
Yes. Twenty-five years ago, I approached Millville, maybe it was a little longer than that, up out their fire department, wasn't raising enough money with their carnival, and I felt it was, you know, time maybe that they would dissolve their fire department and come with Ross. And they agreed to do so, and that's how we picked up Steve Miller for his ex and, you know, being the chief for us. So I approached Millville again on my own to ask them about, I know it's harder for them to keep on running their, their village short of money, paying us, what, sixty-some thousand dollars for fire protection. Their levy doesn't raise that much, so they get kicking money from the village. So I know they're running low on money. So I approached one of the board members, mentioned it to him, and he says, well, we've been considering that, but they found a grant. It'll keep them alive for a little while. So I told him, I said, he said, we'd have to divide the township, you know, the village up with Ross and Hanover. I said, I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at taking over the whole village. The reason is, the side that Hanover would have, they can't provide the service for the fire department, and we can't because we're right around the corner. So we, it wouldn't be fair for that northern part of the village not get the same protection of the southern village. So I lifted it at that, and I just put a, a little, you know, a little whisper in his ear, knowing at least I am, I think the board might be as well, considering that, because we'd be picking up businesses up there for one.
I think you might need to consult with the prosecutor on that, because there are geographical areas that are designated Hanover.
Yeah, I know.
And a township cannot annex another township.
Well, it would be annexed, you know, if they-
No, it is, because there, there's a portion of Hanover that's Millville. There's a portion of Ross that's Millville, and they are geographically assigned to those townships.
Okay.
And I see what you're saying. Now, Millville were to dissolve, and Hanover, what's usually, what's unusual is it's usually in one township. But because they're already split, that may not be, because right now, if you live in Millville, depending on which section you're in, you pay a little bit of inside millage to either Ross or Hanover. So Hanover's receiving money, and Ross is, we get more money in our general fund because of Millville, a- as does Hanover. If they were to dissolve, and they would have to vote to do that, it would have to be on the ballot, it would, the townships would take their portions. Now, I understand what you're saying about the, the firehouse is really closer to Ross.
Right.
We'd have to look at that geographically, because I would think we would still continue to cover the portion that's already in Ross Township. Hanover would cover the portion that's, so there, this is kind of like us taking the section of one twenty-eight. There is no provision that I'm aware of. It could be, maybe there is one, but for a township to take another township.
Because we did give a part two, Fearful Township, that we had over on the other side of the river. And we gave it to them back in those days, because they, it was, made more sense.
You may want to talk to Kevin Garrity in the prosecutor's office hypothetically, how that could work.
Yeah.
Is there something that would allow for that? And just make sure, because you don't want to make a lot of promises we can't deliver on-
I know, it just, it was-
But it's a great idea.
Pick up some extra money for us and, and help them out still in the, in the long run. Because like when we took over the fire department, and some people says, well, let's give them so much money. I said, no, let's get an appraiser here, give them a good honest amount with that, whose equipment's worth, not just throw out a token out there, you know? So we had that done, and, and we absorbed the fire department. I'm, I'm just looking, like you said.
Well, I know that our road department is no longer providing snow services because it's too much wear and tear, and we don't, what they were paying us doesn't-
Right.
So if they would dissolve and we take them on, we really, I don't know that we would get much more, because we're, well, we would get the, we would get the values of the properties that go with it, because we're already getting inside millage. We would potentially get additional revenue, and maybe get additional local government money. There might be some additional revenues out there, but I don't know.
How much, right.
Yeah.
It's just a thought.
Yeah.
All right. Then my second item, we have a land use plan for five years, but do we actually have a township plan where we're headed to, what we want to do? So I'm looking at it this way. When we bought this building from Trekkerser, at the time, it was more of an improvement of what we had down there at the firehouse, where we had our meeting and stuff like that. But this building, I think of all of us would agree, is costing us a lot of money to maintain and take care of. It's constant. Now we got probably another roof looking at, stuff like this. So the building is basically impractical for us to have. I would like the board to consider getting a space use study going, see how much space we would like to have or need for growth as well, encompassing the fire department from down there, bring it up here, have two or three bays, so there's always a little bit room for growth. The police department as well, they can, they can share a common area as far as the lunchroom area or kitchen area, a workout area, as well as township people could do that. And in the, in the front, it would be the township and meeting hall and offices there. And, and maybe an office to expand to. So I talked to the, what's his name, Wolf, we were running with a new car dealership there on one twenty-eight, Waldorf.
Oh.
I talked to him about his building, and I just wanted to know what his building cost him, without, without the land, without anything going at this building as it stands. Because that's going to be close to what we need, maybe not so much as a high barrier that would be pushed out into the front where he has his offices. It came in at one point two. So that's not excessive, I don't think. And I would like the township to consider a study of removing this building. I was looking at what we have as land use as far as the width in the back, have the fire department go out the backside, so they can go either way on, on school road, and, and, and don't have to worry about the traffic out here so much. The lights would flash yellow out here to stop everybody so they can come through, and they'd still have access going to the other direction, going north or going south and lay on, well, east or west. The police department also being in the back with the offices and so on and so forth. So that building, like I said, up there is close to what we could use, maybe a little bit move things around. I just want to get at the cost, you know? So I was hoping that the board would consider that, that thought, as well as maybe a five-year plan. Where are we headed? Are, you know, where do we want to go? And, and what are we going to do as far as funding our police department, fire department? With the millage we got right now could be changed to generate more money because of revenues that, or the new houses being built, the revenues changing as far as the state, increasing the, you know, twenty-nine percent, twenty-six percent on the income or property taxes, we could gain that. So in other words, if we have, let's say, the fire department, police department, we have a five-point-two-five millage, and that generates, what, eight-hundred-thousand and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand? So let's say nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. If we would look at that, have that changed, and maybe drop it down to three mills, which would be giving everybody basically, I'm, I'm just throwing figures out there, it'd be giving them two mills back, but it'd generate a hell of a lot more money for us in the long run. So that's an option for the police department. We, we have the same option for the fire department, because we're looking at replacing some trucks real soon. How many years we got for the twin?
We've got a while for the engines. We just have another seventeen years.
Seventeen years?
Before the pumpers need replaced.
Okay, that's good.
The, the reserve pumper, it, we're going to need to-
And you can still keep it as a reserve. This can't be frontline equipment.
Right.
So I'm looking at that as a five-year plan. So that's it in a barrel wick, basically. So I'm leaning to the board, make a decision, discussion tonight, or we can table it and talk about it next time. Or we can table it and just talk about it some other time.
Permission?
Sure.
I, I said I had something I wanted to talk about later, and I was going to propose it for a work session topic. And that is to start looking at, we have a fire levy that renews in twenty-six. We have the potential to renew it in November of twenty-five, which is next with this year. And I was going to suggest that we start looking at with, I need new values from the auditor, but once we get them, to start talking about combining the two existing, running it early, the potential of running it early and starting it in twenty-six, which would be next year, and voluntarily rescinding the two existing, but just to see what that, so it's, we're kind of of the same mindset, but making that a work session topic for next year.
And we have to start educating the public.
Right.
Now.
But we kind of have to know the numbers before-
Right, oh, I understand that, yeah.
But also what you just said sounds like a great work session topic for, because there's going to have to be questions asked and answered before you start entertaining bids on a space study.
Yeah.
Somebody who can talk about from, you know, the whole process from transition to build, what that would require. What is that potentially a work session topic?
It's fine.
Because it kind of bumps up to what I was gonna ask about for a work session.
We're on the same page.
And, and the, the, the fire budget is getting tighter, and it is no, no fault of either former chief Miller or new- And it is no fault of either former Chief Miller or new Chief Johns. They had a lot of equipment issues this year. We have a lot of end-of-life equipment that he inherited. And as we talked in budget hearings, Mr. Reinger can attest to, and he sat through that, we have, they have a lot of expensive equipment that is at end of life and that we need to talk about. And we have little or no wiggle room in their budget. He does a great job maintaining the current budget. You know, we don't have an exorbitant amount of full-time personnel. We'd like to have more, but really just can't afford it. So looking forward the next five, 10 years where we want to be, how we want to be, you know, what are our options? And unfortunately, the levies are the only way we have to do that, fund that. So what's the best use of our levies? We've renewed the levies as long as we can. We're not getting any additional revenue from them, which is great. And we've done a great job maintaining that bottom line. But that bottom line is starting to look a lot closer and we can't. Otherwise, the general fund is going to have to start. I don't think it's going to be this year, but next year in '26, the general fund might be looking at taking on a little of the responsibility.
Maybe we should talk to the governor and see if he'll increase it since John Kasich lowered it.
I would love to see them release some of those local government funds back to the local governments, but I don't know that that's ever going to happen regardless of who's sitting in the governor's office.
Station 101 in a floodplain?
Yes.
Yes.
And by the way, we could change that into a civic center. Hire somebody to take care of it a little bit, you know, like Gene Whistlebucker did, the graveyard, stuff like that. Not a full-time job, but you know, we could pave a little bit more and it has nice big bays. It could be used for something like that. That's utilizing that building. I'm glad you brought that up.
Are we in the same position with 101 as we were the property in the Morgan Lane? Where it's in floodplain and?
But it's already there, it's existing. You don't have to change it. SYUDF came up six foot.
Right.
Because it was in a floodplain, which all the mud came from our layout.
You can't knock down 101 and just say, hey, we have this property for sale. Everybody wants it because it's in a floodplain and.
So keep the building and just utilize it another way.
Or you sell it as is.
Yeah, you know it as is.
People realize it's in a floodplain.
And then the thing about Millville, I'm not against, you know, looking at it, but we probably want to know what it's going to cost us.
Bingo, yeah. It's just, I threw it out there as an idea.
Same kind of thing. What it's going to cost us for Chris and Robert to supply services there.
In the road department.
In the road department before.
We already get money from the contract.
I'm not saying we won't get, that it's not.
Right.
You know, doable, but don't look at that. That's all I have.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to discuss. Possibly two really potentially great work sessions. And I don't think either one is going to be resolved in a single work session. But at least we can get the ball rolling and start talking about.
Exactly.
Long term.
Get the ball rolling, start collecting yard.
I'm hoping the auditor has the value abstract ready because if they do, then I could start giving you real numbers of this is what it currently generates. And if we ran a new one with the same millage and reduced millages, this is what it would generate. And I agree with you. I think it could potentially reduce the overall millage. I don't know how much. But my gut feeling tells me we'll be able to reduce it some and generate more. It's, we're already in a non-qualifying levy position with that, so.
And in a case like that, wouldn't Hanover also have to be on board? I mean, you take a village and make it two streets, Ferry Lane and Betty Drive. That's what would be the village of Millville if Hanover says no. Could you?
If Millville dissolved, Hanover and Ross are really going to have to both be on board. If they ever, and if they put it on the ballot, we're going to know.
Do the residents vote on that?
Yeah, they have to vote.
Yeah, it's just not up to council.
No.
Okay, right.
Now, did something, I don't know if it affects them. A new law, I just read went into effect that if you are not providing five of 10 pertinent services, you could be forced to dissolve. And they mentioned specifically in Butler that Jaxsonburg is one that would be affected. But my first thought was, I wonder if Millville's on the same list? Because, you know, if you are not providing the services, you can be forced to dissolve. So these are conversations that probably we need to have at least some tentative feelings about. I know when Somerville dissolved, Milford was already providing all their services. So it was a no-brainer for them and they were willing participant to assume the duty. But it's a conversation we may have to have with Hanover. Just say, look, hypothetically, if they would vote to dissolve, are we both prepared? And to your point, is it just the geographical split and you walk away? Or is there something else to discuss? Because it might make more sense for us to take this.
If the residents vote not to dissolve, is that what you're saying? The residents have to vote to dissolve?
You figure if that were to occur, we're going to pick up a portion of a police levy that they're not paying now and receiving, they're receiving irregular property taxes from the sheriff's department. And we're going to say, hey, you're going to pay for Ross Township to answer your call versus what you're getting for free.
So they're imposed some type of a tax or something to?
Yeah, we don't want them to feel like there's taxation without representation.
And in the future, we've spoken in the future that the road department may have to have levy. They've got to be aware of that may occur also if they would put that in there. We're possibly in the next five to 10, kind of have to have a road levy to cover.
Hanover has either an operation levy or a road levy that impacts that section of Millville. So it's, there's some give and take and, you know, we might.
I think the last time they did, it was tar and chip. It actually did black.
But, you know, we would be taking on more. And with that, doesn't necessarily mean that all the property taxes are not always going to solve all the problems. So we just have to look at it.
And we did that as a police department upon the takeover. They got police services, fire services to pay off the equipment that came to Station 2. And it, of course, that's 20 years ago. At that point, it wasn't much of a burden to the police department. But again, that's 20 years ago. Stuff to think about.
Just mutual thought.
Absolutely. Better to be prepared than not prepared.
Anything else?
I guess I got a question since I can't think of anywhere else to ask. The format to our meetings has changed drastically tonight. How did that come about? Because I was not made aware of an email or any type of conversation at our last work session that as of 2025, we were going to change our format.
Well, the county commissioners, you ever been to their meeting?
Middle of the day and I do other things to make a living.
The administrator does all the conversation with the public and everything else, all the mailing stuff. Again, we as a board, we don't pull out the motion numbers. We don't do a lot of things. It's done by the administrator. So the county has the administrator project everything to the commissioners. They decide if they're going to discuss it and vote on it. So that's how we used to do it. Used to be when we had a clerk, not an administrator, just a clerk. Judy did all the reading of the minutes and we voted on it. So I'm assuming when Ellen came on, she wanted to be the clerk, but she didn't want to run against Judy. So she ran her trustee against me. One, okay. I'm quite sure she's the one that had changed. Just like it used to be seven o'clock instead of six o'clock. We'll keep the six o'clock. But I felt we should be more in line with what the county does and not in the way we were doing it. Understand?
Yep. Again, two more trustees and nothing, no discussion was brought up that you wanted to make this change in order to go to any type of vote. I don't, at this point, I'm not really appreciative that it was implemented without any type of discussion.
I understand where you come from.
That is not the way we work.
Okay, I apologize. I didn't want to single you out or anybody else. I just thought, you know, and I did, but not intentionally. But, you know, but this is how the county does it. And so I brought it to Lori's attention and that's where it's at.
Okay. Again, I felt it, I feel that it should have been a discussion amongst either the work session last month or discussion tonight prior to implementing it. Again, there's three of us sit up here and maybe one was left out, maybe two was left out. I'm completely unaware, but I was completely unaware of this with the information highway, the internet, emails and a phone call from the administrator. So, all right. That was my question.
You're discussing protocol? Do you operate under Robert rules? Okay, just a suggestion or a thought. A lot of the other meetings I attend in the county, what's the pledge and the roll call is that there's a review of agenda items, then there's an approval of the agenda, then the meeting runs. I don't see an approval of the agenda here. I mean, you go through your issues like procedural actions and administrative actions, but there's no real approval of agenda. Because if somebody here wanted the change of the agenda for tonight, it should be put on there, you know, approve the change. That's all.
Good point. We don't have a sergeant of arms neither, but we do have an officer here.
That's why I asked if he ran by Robert rules.
We wing it. I have nothing further.
Announcements, none from administration, any from the board? Correspondence, none from administration, any from the board? Topics for the January 16th, 2025 work session. Sidewalk policy discussion. Fire levies, potential of putting one on the 2025 ballot. Township plan for the Government Services Building and Millville. Next is executive session. Motion number 25-010 to retire to executive session to discuss the employment promotion or compensation of a public employee in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1. Time?
Need a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am.